And they can say that we have actually worked with Alteris who provided a sample of something that they generated in another school district. So what we're using has been utilized in another district and has proven to be successful and helpful for the parent school community. So I think there's two important levels of communication that are there. One is literally, you probably see it sitting on the wall next to the door right here come September, an actual flip chart with the emergency protocols that will guide people that are in the room should we go into an emergency protocol. And then the other would be when a parent hears and gets an announcement from me or from Carol or someone else that a school is in a lockout, that they will have this resource to help them understand what a lockout is, what the district protocols are, and advising parents of proper steps for them to follow in such a place.
And we can also link to it. So when we send out an alert, we can always link back to that document so people can refer to it because they may have read it months ago, you know.
Great.
But it was clear when we had our lockout that people didn't know what that meant. They all thought we were in lockdown and they're very different, and they really are. We have equipped every, we have a safety team in every building, a building level safety team, and we're going to make sure every single one of them has a radio. So we didn't have that before, you know, really just didn't think that was, so you know, now that, now we're being told this is a really good idea. And also we have what's called emergency go-kits. We, we had a pretty good go-kit, but we're just ensuring that it have everything in it that we do need, so we're refreshing those.
Who has go-kits?
All of the building teams, each safety team has one, and the district has one as well. So, so one suggestion that I, that I would never have thought of-
Brandon, if I may interrupt again, and just for clarity and for record for those that may have been in the idea of a go-kit would be if you had to evacuate the building, that you would have basic first aid and other materials that would be able to be of assistance and support needs if we had to move the children from, you know, the primary location.
The, um, one thing that we never would have thought of is numbering exterior doors. And, you know, like, what does that mean? But if you're a first responder trying to, you know, access something or view something from outside, you would see, oh, we're talking about door or window blank, and, and they can actually see it from outside. So it's a very helpful tool. And this, these are things that have come in, in our conversations with the chief of police and the SWAT team people that we work with in Irvington. So SWAT train, I don't think there's SWAT team, I'm sorry, I'm using bad language there. But anyway, so that's the kind of thing we're working on right now. We're, and you do, and exterior doors and interior doors. It's going to take us longer to do all the interior, but we're at least getting all the exterior doors done.
You mentioned windows, are those-
And windows too, that's, it's going to take us a little bit longer to get all the windows done. There's a lot of windows, so. So we're, obviously, as Chris mentioned, we're updating our district and building safety plans. That's a requirement to be submitted, I believe, by September fifteenth. They're pretty much completed, but we're just finalizing a few things. And then I have to send them off to the state and to the local police, they, they receive them. The building plans are, the detail of the building plans are confidential. The district plan will be putting on our website. Staff training at opening day, this is something that we, we do every year, but we'll continue to, continue to make that as effective as possible. We will be reviewing our expectations with our security company summit about all of our new visitor protocols. That's going to be happening next week. And last thing is installing shades. So there, there are some classrooms that are very open in terms of glass, but there really is no place for the students to hide in a lockdown. And so one of the things we can do in the short term, again, it's not a permanent solution, would be to install some shades, they could quickly pull them down, so somebody who wanted to access wouldn't know that there's children in that room. So that's one of the things we're doing, and we should have that done before the start of school. There are more places we will want to do it, but we're going to do the most egregious areas first. So that's how we're working it. Other things that we're doing that we probably won't have in place by the beginning of school, but we've ordered some, what I call, concrete walls and planters to, to line the long sidewalk that's up at the campus here to prevent a car from coming onto the sidewalk and potentially hitting students, and also protecting that courtyard area where the students are playing in the middle school. We're going to be improving the fencing at Dow's Lane, especially by that drop-off area and by the playground area. So again, a car can't just go in that area so easily. We're going to be adding cameras in the entranceways of, of all the different buildings. We have some now, but we're going to augment that and try to get more. We do have some issues with capacity and switches, so that's partly what we're working through right now. We have scheduled a six-hour training session with each building level safety team. And this is something where really we had been doing, you know, maybe more of a one-hour training periodically throughout the year. We're now doing a, a really comprehensive training with a building safety team, and pretty much early, those are in September for each building. And that will be led by Alteris, so there will be professionals. We will continue to hold our safety wide, our district-wide safety meetings that we do every year. We will continue to hold all of the drills that we do. We meet all of the SED guidelines, we typically even go a little further. We'll be numbering the classroom windows and installing more shades where we can. So that's, those are, again, all the short-term things. Couple other things that we're exploring are emotion sensor lighting from Azaro's Tower, if we can get something that's not disturbing, but can come on at night when, just for a short amount of time to, to eliminate an issue. And then we're still exploring the idea of maybe working with the village on how to acquire an SRO, a school resource officer. And then we talked about the Capitol project, and that will be more forthcoming in the next conversations on that. But there's a lot we have to do there, so. Want me to go through them, or?
I think it's worth referencing.
Okay, so, so sure. So obviously, the, the biggest one would be trying to enclose our campus because we have multiple entrances here where people can come in and out, and there's just not really that, that one stream for door for middle school and high school. So trying to figure out how to do that best. Creating vestibules because, like, when you think about, Main Street School is really the only one that we really have a vestibule entrance where they can come in, we can see their, we can see them before they get in, and then we can buzz them in. Everywhere else, we really don't have that. And that's more of the norm now to do that. And then actually, ultimately, your visitor management signing system would go in the vestibule if we can get it to be that, that level, so that you're really checking them before they actually are in the building. That would be the goal. Continue to put more bollards and safety barriers where we thought, where we think we're lacking. If we put some money in our budget for this year, we'll see how far that goes. Door hardware and smart keys. So it's seemingly an easy thing to do, but it really isn't because, again, it's, it's all computer-generated, but that's where things can lock automatically in a lockdown. You know, you don't really need the keys, everybody's got a smart key, so we've talked about that a lot of times. But it's, it's, it's not something I can just snap my fingers and say, I want to do it, because it, it doesn't involve computer equipment. We, our, our phone system and our PA system are in desperate need of upgrading, and they also are serving for security when things happen. If you can't rely on a PA system to let people know what's going on inside the building, that's, you know, there are some dead spots here which we are trying to address as we can. Again, we're making whatever short-term reforms we can until we can get this done, so we're fixing the most, you know, problematic areas, but the systems we have are very old, so there's only so much we can do with it. I know we talked about cameras, again, improving the cameras. Window safety measures, there, there is something called security film that you can put on. It doesn't make it completely bulletproof, but it certainly makes it better. To put something bulletproof is very expensive and probably way outside of our budget, but there are some things we can do, especially for some of the first-floor locations, to make it somewhat harder for someone to, to get into a window.
Right, the, the window doesn't necessarily shatter and stays-
Right.
-in place, so you can't necessarily access the-
Right. Well, we have that now, where our windows are, are safety glass, but this would be, this would be more of even a security film, it would be repelling. So it would, it's, it's not bulletproof, but it would certainly help a lot. So there, I have, we're still looking into what, you know, what we can do on that, but. And lastly is lighting. You know, lighting is a deterrent. When you have better lighting, people, you know, are seen more, you can, you can't lurk, so that's another area that we have to look at. So these are all things that the committee has talked about in a nutshell. I mean, there's a lot more detail behind this, but these are the major, major themes.
Can I ask one question about the immediate list at the top in terms of numbering the doors and the windows? The last meeting I was at, which was a while ago, I seem to recall that it hadn't been decided the size of the numbering, the color of the numbering. Has there been any further development on what it's going to look like? Because I know there was a concern, we don't want it to look like a prison, right? That everything's black numbered on the outside of the building.
Yeah, I think we, we're still looking at different resources for it, which is why we haven't finished this, because we're still looking at what's durable, what's visible, and what our options are in the size. We have not finalized that yet. That's why it's still in process.
Question, last year, we had periodic patrol of the halls by Irvington Police Department. Is that going to continue?
Well, exterior, the police do come. Interior, I don't know, have they been coming interior?
Yeah, so-
Yeah, theoretically, right?
They started coming less at the end of the school year, and I didn't, and the chief made a commitment to continue that for the year, but is the commitment there for the, for this school year?
Yep, and actually, Carol and I met with Village Administrator Larry Schopper and the Chief of Police.
A couple weeks ago.
Yeah, and to explore the idea and the commitment to, that we, in the book for grants for school resource officers, as Carol had referenced earlier, because in many cases, those grants are introduced to municipalities, not necessarily school districts or through law enforcement agencies. There was one opportunity that surfaced, but as Carol and Larry dug into it, we weren't eligible to apply for it.
No, it was, we were eligible, but it specifically excluded anybody on a payroll, which means a school resource officer. So the logic of it was not so good for us.
But it was a municipal grant, a grant that would have gone through municipality and not through a, a school district. But in the course of that initial conversation, that we specifically talked about the, you know, the police tours, so to speak, and the presence, and the chief is, is committed to that without question.
Including parking cars, just to have the presence of a car.
Right.
And, but I would like that, if we do find that opportunity to apply for a grant mid-course, something that would be outside a budget cycle, that, you know, it would be looking at a conversation that we would be having as a school district leadership team, our interest in, in partnering with the police department in, in such an, an effort, but it would also be a parallel conversation that would be happening with the village trustees because it would be a shared resource. So that would be processed, should that opportunity surface. If we don't come across grants, then we may have that consideration down the road as looking for it to be a budgetary initiative, one way or another, whether the village, school district, or a shared effort, but that's, you have to be seen.
Okay, and just, I think you should also consider in the protocol communication with parents, putting that in there, that Irvington Police Department will, will continue their patrols and include that cars might be seen on campus from time to time, because whenever the cars were seen here-
Right, there's a call-
-there was always calls and things posted, and what's going on, what's going on, and I think if it's in the communication, of course, people will still ask, but, you know, it might-
We can point them to the communication that says they're here.
Exactly. And then the only other thing I want to revisit and revisit for those of us on B and G who were at the meeting when we were talking about some of these new safety improvements for this coming school year, the, the use of the lanyards and the, and the new management system, the computer system. Is there any way, you had talked about how ideally it would be great to have some sort of security item, you know, that someone leave-
Collateral.
A collateral, thank you, that, for everyone else. People coming in, you would get your picture ID, but you theoretically can leave the buildings without checking out. So leaving something with security, some sort of collateral, that you can then, you're forced to come back, like ideally your car keys, because you can't leave without, unless you want, but most people do drive. You would have to turn in your badge and then sign out, and then you're giving your keys back, or whatever you left for security. I know that you said that's a, a lot of work, and that would be ideal to do, but might not be there initia, initially. If there's any way, I think if we just trained everyone the right way from the beginning, it would be so much better and smoother, just-
Right, rather than changing mid-course if we set it out as the way it's intended.
So we're working through the, the final, so we developed, at the beginning, at the end of the school year internally, working with our administrative team, developed draft protocols. They were vetted by Alteris, so that's been a part of the conversation that Maria's referencing as it was reviewed in the Buildings and Grounds Committee. And so we're going back, circling back, and looking to try to polish that actually this week, and so we would have some direction there. But I'm hearing that the, the board would be supportive of that, or at least Maria's opining that it would be supportive of the collateral. I saw some other head nods.
I mean, to be perfectly honest, I'd be very concerned about leaving car keys, especially because most cars now with fobs, you can open them with a click of the button, and then your car's unlocked, and a lot of us leave their security items in the car. So from a liability perspective, and I would be uncomfortable leaving my car keys, especially-
What if there was small lockers that you could leave your keys in?
It gets complicated. I mean, I've been in a lot of buildings recently where we got card systems, you know, has been implemented, and I've never been asked to leave collateral, it's just you-
But it's a one-way in, one-way out, and we don't have that.
Yeah, I, well, there is, actually, some of the buildings, it wasn't one-way in, one-way out, but I, I just think personally for car keys for me, that would, that would be a big jump.
It could be anything. Yeah, it doesn't have to be car keys, I mean-
The problem is, what is it?
Right, the problem is, because we talked about driver's license-
Yeah, because that's-
And then you can't do that for those liability reasons.
Right, because this system, you're going to use your license, but you're, we're not storing the license information. This is going, it's feeding to a computer database, and it's coming right back, it's printing out a tag. We're, the district is not keeping that license information. I don't know your, your number, your driver number, nothing, okay? So that's important that the public knows that, because we don't want to be, you know, uh-
We don't want to be accused of privacy, right, right, concern.
So what else do you, do you, like, what do you give?
I would say the collateral subject is, is complicated on, on multiple reasons, because you want to treat people equitably in a situation like that. So if I walk and I don't, using the car keys as an example, if I don't have car keys, well then, you know, I'm going to shoot with you if I don't have something else. So the consistency for implementation is a concern. Alteris will, will tell you they like the idea of collateral, but they don't have a perfect solution for what that collateral may be, and it does present a bit of a management concern.
Take off your watch, take off your rings, okay.
It does, it does present a, a concern.
Because, you know, if, if, you know, if we really are going to secure it, we should know who's here and who's not. So keep, somehow keeping track of, you know, in and out. It also seems so wasteful, the lanyards, if people leave and they're continually taking their lanyards with them, you know?
Yeah, I mean, we're really going to emphasize with the security, going to emphasize you must return it, you know, all these things, and we'll be looking for it.
Can I, can I consider something?
It's difficult.
Would it, would it make sense, I mean, I don't, again, I have no idea how much it costs or, or how feasible it is, but I know that the village issues ID, the library issues IDs, and we just say that most parents that come to the building are actually parents, and you have to have either a school ID, that's the school issues, your library card, or your village ID. I mean, you can walk into the village and, and, you know, if you volunteer, they just print it up in two minutes. I don't know how expensive those cards are.
Does the village already issue them?
Well, it issues those, those of us who volunteer in the village, we all walk around with a village ID, ID card. So I know they have the capability, I still don't know how much the cards cost, but is it too much to ask of our parents that there's four places you can go and these are the four IDs we accept?
I would say there would be, I guess there would be this step, so the challenge in navigating that, whether it was with the village or the district, doing something, the cards themselves are a couple dollars, but it's really the, the time and the documentation to-
But back to school, like, for example, I mean, if parents, could you, could, could we print parent IDs at back to school night? If you had a machine and you plan to visit the building, you just have to have ID. Is that too much to ask parents? I don't think so. It's a kind of a good form of ID to have anyway.
Right, I mean, ideally, I'd taken that one step further. I actually think the student should be wearing IDs, different lanyard, different grade, you know, because we have students who, whether they go to private school, whatever, they come and go, past students. I've always thought that's problematic, because there are kids here who shouldn't be here.
It's, um, it's hard to-
But that's a whole, it's very, it's-
It's hard to-
Higher more assistant principals if you're going to do that, because you have no way to hold kids accountable for that. Who has it, who doesn't have it, who left it, who lost it? I mean, that's a management piece from a, from a building manager.
I, I understand, I'm just saying that, you know, that it's complicated.
And I can say, and I can say, we, we actually asked Alteris about that, and they said they've never really seen a situation where that's worked well, because it turns into, you know, are you going to discipline a child for not having it? And why'd you stop this person and not that person who wasn't wearing it? You know, so that he's a selective enforcement.
Right. Do we, do the kids get the IDs now? Does every child have a school ID? Because I would say that, just as a parent, I would love my child to have a, a school ID, because lots of places now, even when you travel, they'll say, oh, do you have any form of ID?
They do get it after picture day, they get it with-
They, they get it?
For the, yeah, they always do.
Yeah, I was going to say, and, and I'd be happy to pay a dollar or two to have my own Irvington ID as well as my child. I just, I just would be more comfortable personally if you said to me, you've got to go get the ID, pay two dollars, and leave you my car keys. That's just my perspective. I, I, I leave a lot of stuff.
So I think we got to look, I think we got to look into a little bit more on that, and this whole topic of collateral, because, you know, again, if you don't have full board support, it's going to be difficult to, so I don't know, I mean-
And there is, as someone referenced, there is a, a bit of a liability issue, whether it's a, you know, a key, if someone has a key fob versus someone that has a traditional car key, or if someone that doesn't have anything else, they turn, I'm going to hand you my driver's license because I have nothing else, and hold on, we don't necessarily want your driver's license for that purpose. So there's, there's layers to work through on that.
There's a way of locking it yourself, you know, Michael had spoke about that earlier. Yeah, but again, we don't have the facility for that right now, you know, like getting something mounted on the wall that you could lock yourself temporarily.
And then, I have to choose a pair of some keys, and then to those lockers, and not to be able to get the stuff out, I mean, there's just a lot of-
Right, no, I know, I know.
Complications.
Nothing's easy.
But we're moving in the right direction. I think we're getting people trained. I would love to start, you're right, something fully, but-
So the, the, the security will be telling people, you need to come out and sign out new protocols?
Right.
Hopefully that people-
And we will get, you know, this is, unlike the paper lists, we'll have a report. So we'll, we'll know who didn't sign out, you know, we, we can actually even, you know, at some point, see if there's people that just keep doing the same thing and maybe reaching out to them or something, or putting on, on a list, because we have control over this, we can maybe put an alert message when they come in, hey, you didn't sign out last time, reminding them. So there, there are some other tools we can use with this system. We're still exploring it and learning it, so I can't comment fully yet, but-
Well, I guess, I mean, we, we've only talked about going in and out the door. Once they're inside, what are you doing? I mean-
Well, at least they'll have a pass on, so that they, they've been vetted, right? They'll have it lanyered.
So within our, so as we finalize our protocols, there's some communication from a guard to verifying that the person is being, that the person's either expected or not being expected to do the protocol for the persons arriving. We're finalizing details about having people escorted back and forth where possible, so to limit those opportunities for people to wander through halls. You know, realistically, the concern surfaces mainly here, because at both of the elementary schools, you enter right towards the, the school office, so the person, visitor can be directed to the office and then escorted easily. Here, the, the size of the, of the, of the campus, let alone the distance from the current entry for the, the high school poses a challenge. Middle schools is doable. That big picture is something that's, might be, there might be fixes for relocating the entrance to the high school, but short-term, we're looking at our protocols that will be communicated with, with parents to help reinforce that. But it is another step for all staff involved as well in the learning process and, and protocol.
Yeah, and so, so often, all of these elements related to security come back to the culture of, of the community that's implementing them.
Yep. And hopefully, everybody will see that we're trying to protect their children, so, I mean, I think they'll take it in the right vein.
Yeah, so when the, the community should expect the, the security communication that would come out towards the tail end of next week, outlining not only the different enhancements that have been completed, those that are in process, some of the big picture ones, but also then again, communicating our visitor protocols and setting those expectations and having them posted clearly on our, our website.
Are there, are there questions? Okay, well, thank you for that overview, and I know that's, there's been a lot of work pulling that all together, so thank you for that. So our, our next topic is a, a second conversation about considering a change to our, the structure of our board leadership. And so the, the idea here is that we would consider adding a second board president. We have a president, a vice president, and their responsibilities are primarily around working with the superintendent and planning meetings and communicating along with the superintendent updates regarding activities happening in the, or, you know, work that's happening in the district. President leads the meeting, and the, this vice president steps in in the event that President's not available. But as it turns out, there's a, you know, as it's been discussed in the past, there's a lot of time required for, for the role, just because there are, there are so many things occurring in our district, and so we, we had a prior discussion, and in the meantime, I did look around there, I think there are about 700 districts in the state, and I found only a handful clustered in Long Island that do have a second vice president. So that was a question last week, are there many other districts that, that do it? Not so much. There are, as we've seen here and in a lot of other places, many other organizations that are having co-presidents, you know, PTSA, RAF have that. It's, I don't think that's a, you know, co-president is a structure that would work for a school board, I don't even know if it's legal, but we did run it by our, our attorney who, you know, inserted the changes to policy and didn't see really any concerns from a legal perspective in terms of the idea of implementing a second vice president. On a practical basis, Marie and I, having been in the role last year, there were a couple occasions where, you know, one of us had work and the other was sick, or vice versa, and there is no structure, official structure for anybody else to, to step in in the event that the two of us aren't available. Certainly, our district and many other districts have, have succeeded without having a, a second vice president. But I think it's also an opportunity to, to be involved in the process. I think in the experience, if you were asking anybody who's been on the executive team, you know, there's often a, a learning curve, so, let's shoot. So this might be an opportunity to, to sort of, you know, be in a learner mode for, for, you know, particularly our board is a relatively young board with primarily first term and a couple of second-term trustees. So in this role, it's a chance to, to sort of get up to speed, and potentially, if you're, if, you know, just on a very practical basis with our board, I think there's some of us who will be moving on, some of us who aren't available to be on the exec team, some people may not want to be reelected, so there's a few people who, at the end of the day, that's one of the reasons we expanded to seven, will be available to, to run on the, to be on the executive team. And so, you know, this year, and then again, next year, if there was still a second vice president, that gives a, a good number of trustees a chance to, to be a part of that planning process and understand it, so that should the, the opportunity arise that they're in a leadership role, they don't have that learning curve. So I could go on, but I just wanted to sort of get the conversation rolling, and certainly if there are questions, or concerns, or suggestions.
Yeah, I, I would like to add that I don't see this as a permanent thing. I see, you know, looking at other boards, seven-member boards and non-member boards, these are boards that, you have some people who've been on it for a long time, some people who are new, but there's history there, and for continuity, I think, you know, I think we did a really nice job going from five to seven, the creation of the handbook, and, you know, the, the leadership that we've had. Having a second VP for us, I think, my opinion, makes sense for continuity, but I see it as a short-term, as people, some people come and go on the board, but some people stay longer, and we stay at a seven-member board. I don't see it as a permanent thing. I see it as something just, you know, to help all the good work that we've done to date and keep it moving forward and groom, you know, potential exec members going forward as well.
I mean, personally, for me, and I had expressed this last time, from a governance perspective, I, I'm still not in favor of two vice presidents. I think it's top-heavy. I think, secondly, that we just recently switched to a seven-person board, and we really haven't kind of found our groove yet. I mean, I do agree that we're in a really good place, and the handbook certainly helps as well as just, I think, us cohesively, we're, we're in a good place. I, I'm not sure adding at this point, early in the game, a second vice president is going to necessarily make it better, but that's easier for me to say, because I'm not sitting in your shoes. your shoes, so I'm certainly not gonna stand in the way of this, um, or object to it, because I know that you've put a lot of thought into it, and you are the executive for it, and you're telling us that you need a second VP, uh, because of the workload, I, I appreciate that and understand it. I, I can say though, from a governance perspective, you know, I'm not in favor of it, but that's, that's again, not something I really wanna, um, fall on the sword for, it's not that important, I just, I'm giving you my advice, I'm a little theory, and, and whenever we start off something with it's temporary, that actually makes me more concerned, not less concerned, because if we're gonna do it, because we've put a lot of thought into it, we've worked the model for a while, and we know this is now something that we need as a board, then I'd be a little bit more apt to say this is a good idea, but when you start it off with, we're gonna just do it as a short-term measure to see if it works, that to me doesn't feel like good governance, but again, um, I'm always open to try something.
Okay.
Um, so, we may have also discussed this in the last meeting, but there's going to be a speaker?
Well, I'm sorry, if you could speak into your mic.
Of course. Um, the mechanism for implementing this, if it were to happen this year, would be not in the reorg, but should we wish to reevaluate in coming years? Uh, obviously, looking at the, the first year as a possibility, we would look at either renewing, continuing with it, or, which would require no change, or getting rid of it at the reorg next July, if it worked, and if we decided to adopt something this year. I, what, I'm asking particularly about the specifics of how-
Technically, if you re-, if you change a po-, it's still changing a policy, it's just you're removing-
Changing a policy.
There's a series of policies that were, via our legal counsel, where there would be a few modifications that would have to be made to support the structure, that it, um, that it would be a matter of revising and adopting, um, policy, and adjusting the organization of the board, or reorganization of the board.
Yeah, so I, I would suggest-
We have an option to remove it each year, should we choose-
I mean, ideally, I don't think you would do it year to year, no.
Right.
That, that, to me, just, um-
But should there be an issue in this first year?
Should there be an issue, right, you would sit there and-
We would be in a position to change it next July.
Right.
I mean, to be frank, you know, last year, what we tried to do, uh, in, in a similar vein, is to bring trustees, uh, in, informally to, to meetings, and that, that's a nice idea, because then you have a variety of trustees coming in, so it has a hopefully similar effect. The problem is, in, in practice, it's very difficult, because, uh, it's a, it's a constant negotiation of schedules, you know, are you available, is, you know, are, are we, you know, did we change our, our meeting that week? Um, and so it was, it was very difficult, and at the end of the day, I think we, uh, had two trustees who were able to do it once, so, it, well, that was, that was, I think, our first attempt to do something like this, to get, uh, and, you know, the, also with the, sort of the rotating, uh, you know, trustees coming, it's a little tricky, because you have ongoing conversations, uh, in terms of planning, with different people, uh, stepping in, and so it gets tricky to sort of, well, you have to re, uh, you know, sort of-
It's not as efficient as any city.
Yes, you just have to, you have to step back and sort of say, okay, here's where we are in this planning process, there for, for one meeting. Um, you know, I, I certainly, it, it's not something that's common, it's not, uh, it's, certainly, to my mind, there's a concern of it being, uh, uh, top-heavy, and is it difficult to, to schedule? I think, in fact, you know, if someone's elected a second vice president, you know, we, we calendar, calendar it out, so, uh, the planning is better, the, the ability to say, okay, we know that somebody's gonna be present, and if one of us, uh, is, is not available, that there's someone who's carrying on that, those ongoing planning conversations. Um, I think, uh, just observing, uh, you know, ourselves, I'm really proud of the work we're doing in terms of, uh, continuing to approve the work with the Governance Handbook is, is a great example that we're gonna be approving tonight, uh, and in so many other ways, our retreats, we're really working to, to, uh, continue to approve our, our work as a board, um, and so, you know, to your point about is it too early, I think, actually, this is the right time, and, and to, you know, I'll combine that with, with, uh, what Maria was saying, it may be something that proves, uh, that it's not very good, and so we, you know, in May, say, listen, it was something that we tried, and in fact, it doesn't work, and we step back. It may be something that is fruitful for a couple of years, but we outgrow it, or it could be something that we work into our culture, and it becomes ongoing, as it is in districts in Long Island, so I don't know what the, the future would hold, I know that we tried something, I know that, you know, from, from my point of view, in terms of our, uh, coming up with this idea, we're trying to put, uh, our best foot forward as, as a board, and, um, just, you know, having observed the years prior to when we were in this role, and now being in it, there's a lot to, uh, wrap your head around in terms of structures and times and process, and to give, um, you know, I went thinking about it from just this year, I think over a course of a couple of years, that means that you have pretty much everybody who has the potential to be in executive position doing that, which means that you have a, a pretty well-educated, uh, board in terms of what it takes to plan, and, yeah.
Maybe trendsetters, Michael.
Well, maybe, I know, I know, right? I, I remember in the past, where people on the board would reject things ju- because we don't do it just because other people do it, so this is one case for us to be potentially different.
I'm on board.
Okay.
I'm just good, but thank you.
Oh, you're gonna go, okay, okay.
Bye.
Certainly, did you have, uh, questions or thoughts, Beth?
Uh, the only thing was about terminology, I didn't know if just, um, if we are gonna move forward on it, it made any sense to use a terminology, for example, a secretary to the board instead of a second VP, but if the policies are gonna lay out the roles, it wouldn't matter either way.
Yeah, I think the language of a second vice president, it's, it's pretty clear-cut then, it's, you know, you, you just add it on to where it is, says first vice president, essentially, um, you don't have to add new, um, you know, new policy in terms of what the role is.
Because the roles are defined in the Governance Handbook.
Right, and since we're always reflecting and reevaluating, I think it would be possible to see how it works out, and it sounds like it's so well-thought-out at this point, and that council had already weighed in.
Yeah.
I know that that had been a concern.
Yeah, so we did, we did talk about with our council, and I, I think, um, the way that I, that I, that I think about it is not just, I mean, if it doesn't work after one year, we stop, but my thinking is that, just think about where we stand after a couple of years of doing that, that we have, um, you know, a, a board that really understands the planning process, and, and as we know, as, as we look forward each year towards, you know, uh, how effective our meetings are, and, and the work that we're trying to do is, uh, to, to all, not all, but for more of us to be on the same page about what it takes to achieve that, is, I think, a powerful opportunity. Brian, did you have any thoughts on that?
Nope, I think it's all been said.
Um, the one piece that I would say that I, I said before, and it, and I, I fully respect the board's authority to, to, to restructure in such a, uh, manner, um, but the one point that I would wanna echo, um, that Ms. Hardgrave said before, before she left, and I believe I said at a prior meeting, is that idea of going at this, um, not as a short-term fix, that if it's something, if we make a commitment, and that we stick to it, and build systems and structures that make, that work for the district and for our leadership, and if we find a way, a me, some, for some reason, it is not working, then we reevaluate, but if this is an adjustment that the board chooses to make, my recommendation is that you stick with it until there's a reason to reevaluate it.
Right, and I, I think last meeting, there was the idea of maybe putting in language to reevaluate, I think we can make a judgment at any, any time to say, this isn't working and stop, but in the meantime, the language is permanent until it's not, I mean, so, the, the, the issue, the idea would be to make it work, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, but, yeah, right.
So, the, the process moving forward, should the board choose to proceed then, hearing that you are, is that there would be the, um, adoption of, I think it was three revised policies, um, and in doing so, you can go a traditional route of having, um, you know, a first read and a second read, typically thirty days apart, or you could waive a particular policy that would enable you to, to adopt it in a single shot, so that would be the consideration for the board.
Yeah, I think, I would have to say, we haven't had two discussions about it, I think we could go the expedited route, if no one has, uh-
So to put on to the agenda for the September fourth meeting?
Yeah, we'll talk, yeah, and I'll, I'll consult council on, like, the reorg details and specifics, and obviously some planning, uh, with Peggy as, as well, so.
And subsequently, if we adopt policy, do you wait, uh, another meeting until you do a vote?
To swear in, or can you swear?
Those are the, the details that-
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so now, uh, thank you for your contributions on each of those convercer- conversations, and, uh, we're gonna move to a, uh, consent agenda, uh, and there's a number of things I just wanna reference, we, uh, in this, uh, just like the reorg, we have a lot of things happening here, uh, we're for the board, uh, appointing, uh, members to committees and to liaison roles, um, and then, we are adopting the, the Governance Handbook, which has been worked and reworked, and will continue to be revised, I think, uh-
I, I'm thinking that, that we may see a revision in the next month.
Yeah, exactly, so, uh, but that's, uh, something that we, uh, have all reviewed, and it, it really is, I look forward to having it available on our, our website, so that is people who are curious, uh, to understand the workings of the board, and, and then, most especially for ourselves, it really speaks to, to how we operate, and I think, hopefully, for example, someone like Beth, who's just joining the board, is saving you a lot of time in trying to figure out, how do you do X or Y, because it's spelled out right there.
It's very well drafted.
Um, are some other things we can point out? There are many, many items, but, uh, I think, um, hmm? That was separate, oh-
That's separate?
We have a board action item, so that's outside of the consent agenda, right? Was that what happened with the ten point one?
Yeah.
Uh, ten, yes, ten point one is outside of the consent.
Oh, okay, you're right.
So, um, I'll mention that, once we do that. So, can I get a, a motion to, uh, I guess, uh, is that right, to accept our consent agenda?
Yep, I guess, it's not in there.
Can I get the motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, uh, any questions related to any items?
Only just, I had alerted the board in advance that we have to pull out something that had been on the consent-
Yeah, it's on ten point one, it's separate now.
It's not part of the-
It was pulled in advance.
Okay.
Thank you for that alert.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so, uh, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Very good, so, um, yes, for item ten point one, which relates to a, a contract, I believe you, you have association to work with that, so you asked, uh, to abstain or not vote on it, so we pulled it from the consent.
Nicely.
Um, so, can I get a motion to accept, uh, item ten, or to approve item ten point one?
So moved.
Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good, so our next meeting, uh, is soon, and it will be the first day of school, I believe, for students, and, and that is September fourth, we'll be meeting here at seven thirty, uh, and we will now move into, uh, executive session, uh, for the purpose